Good evening and welcome to the November 5th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Kelly Cozak, Kelly Mulvoyn-Mangan.
Here.
Benjamin Blasting, Samantha Jaberga, Robert C. Sullivan Jr.
Here.
Jerome Valenti.
Here.
Gabrielle Elfin.
Here.
Please fill the fire exits in the front and the back of the room.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have administrative matters, personnel matters, and contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are recessed.
Do I have a motion to reopen the November 5th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Cozak.
Here.
Kelly Mulvoyn-Mangan.
Here.
Benjamin Blasting, Samantha Jaberga.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.
Here.
Jerome Valenti.
Here.
Gabrielle Elfin. Please fill the fire exits in the front and the back of the room.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have one set of minutes from the October 22nd, 2025 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium, and if you do, please state your first and last name. It does not appear that we have any participation this evening. So before we get to the exciting part of the meeting with the kids that are here, I'm going to quickly run through my board update. There's a lot going on in athletics, but before... So, I would like for the National Speech and Debate Association, I want to give a big congratulations to Adina Naim on earning the National Speech and Debate Association's Academic All-American Award. Quite an accomplishment, so congrats to Adina. Also, our high school debate team, congratulations as well for an outstanding performance at Bronx Sciences Sister Remanded Service Tournament this past weekend, actually on October 25th. Oh yeah, that was this past weekend. Paige Banchini was the varsity tournament champion, and Latte placed in the top 12 in the novice division, and Gabby also had a winning record. So, congrats to our debaters. They are always in my update and ever busy and traveling. We had, for those that were not aware, we had a Harrison Rye little competition aside from the football game, a blood drive, and we were the 2025 blood donation champions. The combined blood drive and donor center results for both schools are 71 life-saving blood donations. So, that is wonderful. Our school received 67 donations, and another four donors attempted to donate on behalf of the school but weren't able to do so. So, a lot of people came out.
I wish we had brought that big cup you got. It's very impressive, this giant bowl.
(laughing).
Some of the... Who donated? You had... Good for you. Bravo.
Yay! Awesome. So just so you guys know, these donations will affect the lives of nearly 200 patients in need.
That's incredible.
So, excellent giving.
Go Huskies.
Yes, go Huskies. So, NISMIA, we had Harrison High School students perform with NISMIA all state... the area all-state ensemble on October 30th at SUNY Purchase, and 34 of our high school students were selected to participate in the concert. Moving on to athletics, so we'd actually... there's a lot of updates here, and their whole journey for the varsity boys soccer team, but the culmination of which, they just won...
This is the sectional quarterfinal.
Regional semifinal.
Regional semifinals.
And they won 3-0.
We need four games to get to the state championship.
I mean, they are on fire. This team is... this is incredible, so we are very proud of them.
And when their journey's over, because they're already sectional champions, we'll be inviting them to a school board meeting, but congratulations to the team and the coach.
And we'll celebrate them then, yes.
Yay!
Yeah. The journey continues. For our Huskies, the football earned the number-two seed in the South Division in Section 1 Class A playoffs. They defeated Maia Pac on Halloween night, and then they move on to the semifinal, and will play Somers on Friday at 7:00 PM at Somers High School.
The only thing I must add, how many of you were at that Maia Pac game? The lights went out, completely out, in the middle with three minutes left to play in the game. I was standing between Ms. Bukema and Mr. Mr. I thought I died because everything went dark. But I just need to thank the crowd and all of our support staff who were absolutely amazing during that time. People were so well behaved and so helpful, and of course, our team went on to win, and we'll be at Somers on Friday night. We have a lot going on in this district.
Yep. So, our girls soccer team, they've had... they had an incredible run as well. They were the number-two seed in Section 1 Class A Double-A Playoffs, and they beat Ursuline 2-0 in the quarterfinals. They defeated Maia Pac 2-1 in the semifinals, and then they advanced to the finals. Sophie Olsie scored both goals in a second... in the second double overtime in crazy rain, and that was awesome at home. And I know so many of the students and teachers and faculty and everybody was out there rooting them on. It was an amazing game. And unfortunately, the girls lost to Albertus in the Section 1 Final 2-0, but I know they gave it their all and their heart was in it, and yeah. So unfortunately, they lost, but we are very proud of them. The swimming Section 1 Championship Trials are Friday, November 7th, and all individuals or relay teams that place in the top 16 will move to the finals on Monday, November 10th. Angelina Linkeza, I hope I'm not butchering that, has already qualified in multiple events for the sectional championship. She will compete in the 200 individual medley and 100 breaststroke and swim later at the New York State Championship. So, we are rooting for our swim team as well. The volleyball team, the girls earned the four seed in Section 1 Class Double-A Playoffs. The results of their games were that Harrison defeated Groton 3 sets to 0 in the first round of the playoffs, and they had... the girls gave a valiant effort, forcing a fifth match against Maia Pac, but they lost in the quarterfinals, and it was very close.
Very close.
I was there for three of those.
We were leading. It was all 11-9, and then they went on a run. But the girls did a great job.
They gave it...
It's a very young team. I think there's only one senior on the entire...
Correct. Yeah. So there is so many sophomores on that team, so they have a bright future. And then the cheerleaders, the Huskies are in second place in the Section 1 Class B Game Day class. So, our sport... everybody's very busy and performing extremely well. What else do I have to report on? Just as a reminder, there's no school next Tuesday for Veterans Day. We have the Harrison High School Play coming up on November 7th and 8th at 7:00 PM at the high school.
World premiere.
And then Sunday at 2:00 PM. And then, there's a lot of PTA meetings as well, so please feel free to join and learn more about what's going on in your school. And with that, Dr. Will, I will pass this off to you.
Thank you. I'm very excited to get started tonight, but before we do, there are two pieces of news I want to have everyone hear. Mr. Muller, would you just update us on that magnificent baseball/soccer field that's almost done?
Yeah, absolutely. So, at the end of this week, I think we'll be done with the majority of the field work. Last week, the turf was installed, and this week, they're doing the final touches with the sand infill and the rubber bits or particles that you see that come on top of that. So, very excited about that. That group will be finished by Friday, and then finish some fencing around the exterior of the field. Dugouts will arrive, I think, the first week of December, and they'll be placed on the two concrete pads that are all built. And then the bleachers will be the final step. There'll be some nice grandstand bleachers that'll be installed behind home plate. It'll give everyone a nice vantage point of the game. So, you know, very, very happy with the way it turned out. I think the community and the players will absolutely love it, and I've been walking out there quite a bit and think they've just done a fantastic job, so very, very excited.
I'm very excited. We're getting a concession stand as well. We now have bleachers on the far end of the outfield that you can actually face the girls softball field or the boys junior varsity field. Tremendous upgrades, going to be a great facility and serve lots of kids. Love the fact that you can watch the soccer game from the bleachers too when you're on that field. But we've also been really busy. Dr. Mulhall, couple little things going on. We had Superintendent's Conference Day first, but then give us the more exciting news, the PYP update.
Okay. Thank you. Over the last two weeks, we had visitors come visit each of our elementary schools, and we had the opportunity to kind of narrate our IB PYP journey in each school. Our students were, of course, the best part of the visits. They were tour guides and were able to narrate for our guests their favorite units, what they remember from last year, and what they're excited about moving forward. So, it was a great two weeks to celebrate our journey, and we expect reports from them within, I would say, the next couple of months, but whatever the reports say, there's a lot to be celebrated.
We're all pretending we're ignoring this black thing that happened behind me, but we'll figure it out. Yeah, and I just want to point out, because tonight's presentation is very much aligned with what Dr. Mulhall just shared. We're one of the only districts that we've ever seen, that IB has ever seen, that decided all four of our elementary schools would become primary years program schools at the same time. Why is that? Because it's our philosophy that all means all, every day, all day. So, we want every elementary school to have the same enriching environment for our kids, just like we have that philosophy for our middle school and our high school. So, very proud of all the hard work that the principals and the faculties put into these visits. It was a two-year preparation at least, so we expect to have very good news very soon. And we had a magnificent Superintendent's Conference Day. I see tired teachers in front of me. I know how hard they worked. People think teachers have a day off. That's almost funny. They'd rather go... But you want to highlight anything?
I just would like to say that it was a great partnership between the leadership team and teacher leaders, leading sessions, digging into data, and then really taking the time together to push each other's thinking and then plan for next week with some new ideas and some new approaches, so we're excited.
Yeah, I was mightily impressed. I sat in on one of the debriefs. I think it was the diploma candidates that were analyzing data. Diploma teachers were analyzing data and the kinds of obs... Ms. Bukema was in that room. The observations were brilliant and so deep. This is... there's nothing surface level going on in that high school. It's not an accident that it's such an extraordinary place, so. I'm going to forego most of my other updates except for one. I just want to single out the girls soccer team again. I was at that game. They played an incredible game. I do not think the results are indicative of their abilities. I think the system is stacked against our kids. It was a private school that recruits far and wide. Many of the players on that soccer team were Division 1 players, some not even from within the state. That is not fair, and I just want you to know that I have taken several steps, and we'll be sharing those with you. We are going to change that rule. Public schools should play public schools. We don't recruit kids to come and play athletics or to perform in our programs because we're offering them scholarships. It's just not a level playing field. So, our girls probably should still be in the sectionals if all things were actually fair. And I just want to say, I couldn't be prouder of Coach Zapala and Coach Riley for not so much the coaching, but the love and support that they showed to their athletes, because you have no idea how painful it is for a coach to know that your kids are doing their best and the circumstances are unfair. So, just so proud of them and so proud of the girls. Don't view that as a loss. View it as an extraordinary effort on the part of incredible kids going up against odds that are just completely unfair, and we're going to fix that. Having said that, I'm really excited about this presentation. It started with Ms. Bukema and I going through her thinking during a beginning-of-year conference, and I'm excited to... I guess this is actually part two. The board will recall, we heard from the writing fellows, and we heard from the volleyball team last time, and Leah was here then. I know Lindsay's unable to join us tonight, but we have lots of stellar stories, so I don't know who's going to get the privilege of presenting if the board ever wakes up. I don't mean this board, I mean the board behind me.
(laughing).
I don't know. Andy, what's happening?
Not the people board.
Okay. Can I suggest that we pause the meeting for a minute and we restart the board?
Okay, we're back.
We're back.
We had a minor technical issue, but we are back. I just want to take a quick moment before we move on to the presentation to just briefly introduce, we have a new board student liaison, actually two, but we have one here present this evening, Jessica Kritzman, and we are very... yep. Round of applause. This is the first year that we're implementing this, so we're very excited about our working relationship, and we also... her co- liaison will be Giselle Lopez. She's not here tonight, but she'll be here present at other meetings, and we're very excited for this opportunity to, you know, share in information about the way that the board operates. We'll be meeting with our two student liaisons, Dr. Wool and I, twice a month before each board meeting, and what would you like to add to that?
Well, first of all, congratulations to both of them.
Yeah.
They had to respond to a pretty difficult essay prompt about connecting public education to a thriving democracy, and also to talk about how their school has lived that mission. And both Jessie and Giselle's essays were similar and completely different, but the themes, what they observed about their school was really very moving to Ms. Bukema and I, and we had the pleasure of interviewing them both, and we were going to pick one, and we decided, no, the two voices will be more powerful. So, Jessie and I met the other day for a long time. We had a great conversation, and I think what is going to be most powerful about this is sitting here is sort of the show part. The real understanding is what does the board do? How does it affect students? What can the students tell us? What can I tell them? And so, we're really looking forward to those two meetings where we... we've already come up with some ways to extend opportunities. And tonight, I asked Jessie, if you can make tonight, please do, because it was really short notice, because I wanted her to see your presentation, Mrs. Moore. It's important to me that we show kids how nothing here happens by accident, and I think this is going to be a tremendous learning experience for the students and for us. And Mrs. Mangan and Mrs. Elfin were able to meet. We had a little lunch together and got to know you, and we look forward to getting you up here. Mrs. DeCarlo is ordering your name plaques, and the next time we meet, you'll have your own table way off in the corner. No, just kidding. And you'll be a part of this very important work that we do. So, thank you for being here tonight. And now, without further ado, the principal of our high school, Ms. Bukema.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, tonight's presentation, as you can see by the title slide there, "From Participants to Leaders: Cultivating Belonging at Harrison High School." It does, as Dr. Wool alluded to earlier, it does continue a conversation that we began last school year. What you're going to hear tonight are the intentional choices and small, everyday moments that build opportunities for students to connect, to lead, and to find purpose beyond the academic day. These experiences reflect who we are, where leadership and belonging aren't separate goals but part of the same culture-building work at Harrison High School. I'm joined tonight by Assistant Principal Dr. Maria Pace, along with several of our teachers, Liam...
Wait, let's pause. Maria just got her doctorate. Congratulations, Dr. Pace.
I heard that. I was like, she's...
And wait till you hear what this study is about. It just happens to fit pretty nicely tonight.
I couldn't resist calling her Dr. Pace in the presentation, so she didn't want me to, so I'm really glad that you noticed it. And as well as our teacher leaders, Leah Moore, Liz Hill, Deb DiFiore, and Anna Abellion. And of course, our students representing Friends of Rachel, Kayla Enday, Gabriella Collins, and our youth volunteers of Harrison members, Eva Papushka, Jamie Reyes, and Maddie Reynolds. They are going to share what student agency looks like in practice and how students are moving from participation to leadership, and how that shift is shaping the culture of our high school. Well, the phrase that you hear... see at the top right there, it's something that Dr. Wool mentioned as well, and it really captures the heart of our work. Nothing in Harrison happens by accident. In Harrison, culture doesn't emerge by chance. It's created through deliberate actions, shared purpose, and a system that supports both of those. It isn't something that simply exists, it's something that we build. Dr. Wool often has reminded me of the quote that you see up there, and it has really stuck with me and informed my work. "Vision without systems' thinking ends up painting lovely pictures of the future with no deep understanding of the forces that must be mastered to move from here to there." That idea defines how we approach this work. The programs, the partnerships, and the routines we build are not random. They are the systems that make our vision for student growth and belonging happen. And this slide from me really captures the essence of our high school. Its contents guide our faculty meetings, it guides our grade-level meetings, so there's things that are up there that even our students have seen on that slide, and even the work at yesterday's Superintendent's Conference Day at the high school. The quote on the title of this slide actually comes directly from our opening faculty meeting when we talked about the ripple effect at the beginning of the year. "Nothing in Harrison happens by accident. Culture is built in the moments we choose to create." And that is exactly what we are doing. I called it in the faculty meeting, "Ripples of Purpose," because that message guided us to think about how even the smallest intentional moments, like how we greet students at the door, to how we design opportunities for them to lead, can create a ripple that changes a student's experience and what it really means to belong at our high school. Every club, every student initiative, every act of connection contributes to the larger ripple of belonging. At Harrison, we define student agency through three key ideas: choice, voice, and ownership. With the intent of creating a culture where students are seen, where our students are heard, and most importantly, our students are valued. The culture isn't accidental. It's built moment by moment, choice by choice, in the way that we connect with students and we invite them into our school community. What our school looks like, sounds like, and feels like, do those words echo with you? Because it belongs to all of us, and that is a message that we keep saying within our building when I ask students what kind of high school that they want to attend, and that it is our shared responsibility, and that is going to be what defines our school Now, the focus of our work for our extracurriculars goes back, as Dr. Wool shared as well, to a beginning-of-year conference that happened two years ago. I was lamenting to Dr. Wool that many of our student leaders were focused almost entirely on fundraising rather than on deeper, more meaningful work of shaping school culture, and I was truly, as a leader, struggling to change their focus. So while I would pose the question to them, I would come back to the next meeting about what we could do to shift culture in our building and make students feel welcomed, and then we would go through what all of the different fundraising efforts were going to be or the next event that was planned around school spirit. So, at that exact same time, Dr. Wool was meeting with some of our school teachers who were involved with the Future School Leadership Academy, known as FSLA, and two of them, Leah Moore and Lindsay Riley, had come to him through that work, looking for an impactful project for the high school. And Dr. Wool shared the conversation that he and I had had, and they began together exploring the question, what's the real purpose of an extracurricular program? What started as an inquiry into club purpose evolved into a reimagining of how we define and cultivate student leadership across our entire school. Their goal was to move from a model where student involvement wasn't just about showing up, but about developing the skill and dispositions of leadership. From that idea came the inception of a professional learning course for teachers and coaches, particularly those who advise clubs or they are leading teams. The course became the foundation for what you're going to hear about tonight, a shared intentional effort to develop student leaders who understand that their work is culture building. And I'm going to turn it over to one of those people that I mentioned, Leah Moore, whose work led this.
Thank you very much. You know, it's an interesting coincidence. I don't know if the board noticed that the quote is the one I put in your update this week, the Sengay quote. So, good choice, Ms. Bukema. Of course you did.
Good evening. I'm Leah Moore, and I speak on behalf of myself and Lindsay Riley, who's unable to be here tonight, but I'm thrilled to tell you then what this looked like. So, after we were posed with this question of what is the purpose of extracurricular activities, and as FSLA students, we wanted to do something that felt truly impactful, we decided to take our inquiry question further. So what we broke it down to is what does the current experience look like for students when they're having their extracurricular activities, and then how can we use our collective efforts to shift these activities to create spaces where students have agency and develop leadership skills? And it didn't seem like it would be that hard because we're doing it in all of our classrooms. Turns out, it was actually much harder than we thought. So, at first, we found some not really surprising data based on the way clubs have historically appeared. Students would go to many clubs one time. It would be a little checkbox, kind of felt like compliance, like they were collecting badges of clubs. They would go to those spaces and never speak. They would just sit in the space and say, "I was a participant." And one of the most alarming sentences we heard was, "Well, that club's not for me. That club is not for kids like me." And we saw an overwhelming amount of students that didn't know how to access the club. So despite the fact that we thought we had all of these opportunities and we were breaking down barriers, something still wasn't happening where students couldn't see themselves in these spaces. So, we ultimately, in the first iteration, landed on we needed to create spaces where students were inviting students into these spaces, and that it was not about the adults at all, but when they did that, they could create the conditions so that the student would want to stay. So how can we reshift this so that the students get to work with the students? And that turned into our shift. So, what we first did was we met with Dr. Wool and asked a lot of questions about how should we do this. We examined a lot of leadership theory. We looked at a lot of research around adult and youth partnerships, and the one we kept coming back to was the concept of distributive leadership, which is a cornerstone here at Harrison, and yet the students weren't actively a part of the leadership. They were on paper, but they weren't taking the invitation. Something was being missed between what we wanted and what was being realized. So, we made some significant shifts to reimagine what was going to happen. So the first one was what we learned from Dr. Wool is if you don't start with a why, nobody knows what they're doing or why they're there. So, we asked each of the advisors or the coaches to redesign a mission statement that went beyond just, "I'm here for this subject area," or "I'm here for this actionable space," but it was something that aligned with a greater purpose and of course, aligned with our mission and vision of Harrison. And because of that, we had engagement, we had trust and authenticity, we had much more purposeful execution of why we were doing what we were doing. Secondly, we needed to do the very hard work of asking the advisors to let go, that it wasn't about them. We were very... We were very grateful for their time. We're very, very grateful for their time. But there is a continuum here from the student and the adult. And what would it look like if we shifted who made the decisions? And how can that happen practically so that things could actually happen? Because another thing we heard was, well, students might not follow through, and we might not get to do the things that we would like to do. So we looked for, the research pointed us to that when students are involved in decisions, they have to be large decisions. In order to matter, they have to be invested. So we called this beyond the bake sale. Right? So it wasn't just, I'm going to go speak to Dr. Pace and sign up for when the bake sale is. I'm going to figure out where we're going to allocate our money. I'm going to figure out how we select our leaders, how additional committees are formed, what other partnerships in the building we want to have. These are decisions that adults are making every day, and the students have the same capacity to do it. We just had to build that in the students. So additionally, we wanted to make sure that, as I mentioned before, students might just come once. And what we heard a lot was the students would be invited. They'd come to one meeting, and then nobody would really speak to them. And then they would leave and not come back. So you'll hear from my amazing colleagues that new committees were formed to solve that problem, that there's nothing we can't fix here, right? Everything is intentional. And with every concern we found, we actually found a solution for. Ultimately, we have landed on spaces where all of the communities are creating the story of what their club is, why they're there, and we are building the dispositions of leaders. So what that looks like is now there is a collective goal here. All advisors are on the same page of what their purpose is as an advisor. So it's additional to what they signed up for and that we're building these dispositions of our leaders. So we looked at skills like listening, reliability, time management, empathy, problem solving, public speaking. They're the same skills that we're working on with our approaches to learning, the ATLs that we call them in the IB school. There is a purposeful overlap there. And truly, nothing is happening by accident because we are intentionally growing the bandwidth of students to reflect on these skills. So to do that, we have to ask them to reflect on their own learning. So now, club advisors are not just building the subject area or the art skill. They're also building leaders. And the additional point I want to make there is previously, students were leaders that came in already as leaders. We weren't changing any of the kids. But now, through the work that you'll hear from my colleagues, every single child that is participating has an access point to build their own leadership disposition at their own readiness level, which is truly transformational and very exciting. So it took a little while to get here, but here is the journey that we have been on. So as members of the Harrison community, we love feedback. So we kept building and growing. So you can see this started in the spring of 2023. The first summer course was July 24. We shared with you last year, we were here with the Girls of Our City Soccer Team, the marching band, and the Writing Center as spaces where students' voices were very strong and shifting culture in our building. We then refined the course by working with a study group. And that study group really helped us to hone in on what the mission statement would look like and what the committee will look like, which again, you'll speak here of in a moment. And then ultimately, we've taught the summer course now twice. I'd like to conclude by just sharing that to date, more than 50% of our coaches and advisors have participated in the course. And they will leave with a shared understanding of building these five areas. How do I build a mission statement co-constructed with my students? How do we reframe leadership positions so it's not what it once was? How are there additional committees so there's more access points? How are we recruiting students and keeping them engaged? And as I previously spoke about, the dispositions of a leader. Now, none of this can happen without our partnerships. So I'd like to invite Dr. Pace up here, as she has been our fearless leader for all of our clubs and all of our students, to speak about the additional benefits of this work.
We'll have you back for questions.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Leah. So being here this evening, I'm reminded that as families and as educators and as the community, we all share a common goal of wanting to help our students and children find success. And success can be measured in a number of ways and can look different for each child. And when students, essentially, our goal really is for students to feel connected to and supported by the school community. When students feel connected and have a sense of belonging, they're more likely to attend school. And when they attend, they can access the learning and leadership opportunities that are provided and available to them. So in my role, I do have the privilege of working with our club advisors and the students who participate in those activities. And one way that we've recognized here at Harrison to achieve the goal of allowing or helping our students to find success is through extracurricular participation. Recently, I presented at a high school PTA meeting, and I invited a group of students to share their experiences from the specific clubs that they were a part of. And it was hard to do for them because a lot of them are members of multiple clubs. So I told them, you got to narrow it down to one. So speak to one at the meeting. And the through line from all of the students was the feeling of belonging and the act of being given opportunities to live their passions and then find interests in other areas that they may not have realized they would enjoy. And one thing that every kid that spoke that morning had said was that they wanted to bring this back and turnkey it to the rest of the school community and to share their positive experiences with their peers and even with the staff. So I'd like to take a moment to explore how the extracurriculars at the high school contribute to student success in all areas of their high school experience. So before I share any findings and really discuss what happens in our school, I want everybody in the room, and students, you can do this too, to think back, you won't have to think back, but think back to your high school experience. So I know it wasn't that long ago. So think back to your high school experience. Were you involved in a club? Were you on a team? Were you performing on a stage? Were you an artist? Were you involved in more than one club? So now, think about, how did that experience make you feel in terms of your relationships with your peers, with the staff, and with the greater school community? So that feeling of connection that you may have just recalled, being part of something bigger, really reflects the very values that guide our work in deliberately creating culture of leadership and belonging. So when students participate in these experiences, they're going to assume multiple roles other than that of a student. They take on a leadership role, as we've been discussing here. They become teammates, they become collaborators, and they become creators. And these roles really foster a strong sense of purpose and belonging. They can reduce isolation and build a kind of community that strengthens the entire school. And students begin to take ownership of their work, and they bring purpose to their involvement. So recently, as we just talked about a little while ago, I completed a dissertation, which at first didn't happen the way I thought that it might. My original idea was to have something involved with teacher and student relationships and what that meant in terms of keeping kids in school. But with the role that I have here in talking to Dr. Wool one day about what my goal was in terms of my dissertation, he made a very valid point of make it related to what you're currently doing. And with what I currently do with working with our advisors and the students who are involved in the extracurricular activities, it made sense for me to study what was happening in our high school with extracurriculars. So my study examined whether extracurricular participation would impact attendance and academic achievement and whether factors such as socioeconomic status or gender would influence these outcomes. And again, I used the high school's data. So what I found confirmed what we see every day here at Harrison is that students who are involved in extracurriculars have lower absence rates and greater academic success than their peers who are not involved. And just to give you an idea of what that really looked like in terms of the data, participating students, so students who participated in any extracurricular on any level, on average, missed only six days of school per year, compared to about 16 days of school for students who were non-participating. So to me, mathematically, it was a significant difference. And previous research shows that not all students are going to benefit equally from that participation. And students from low socioeconomic status backgrounds typically face barriers to participation, such as a lack of transportation or even participation fees. And it's known that those same students are the ones who would benefit the most when they have access to participation. But what was most remarkable about my findings and what surprised my dissertation committee, and we spent a lot of time after my defense talking about, wow, what happened, Maria? It was that all Harrison students who participated in any extracurricular, regardless of their background or socioeconomic status, had the same benefits as their higher socioeconomic status peers. So there was no difference in the benefits between the students of lower socioeconomic status and those who are higher socioeconomic status. And what was remarkable about that is all of the previous research that I had reviewed, which is upwards of 75 different studies, demonstrated that this was not supposed to happen. Students from low socioeconomic status backgrounds typically do not have access to and do not reap the same benefits from their participation as other students. So why is Harrison so different? What makes Harrison different? Why are these results atypical? So as we heard tonight several times, nothing in Harrison happens by accident. So through intentional practices, providing transportation, waiving participation fees, and offering more than 90 extracurricular opportunities that are going to appeal to a range of students from diverse backgrounds, interests, and even their levels of participation that they know they have the ability to participate in, ranging from academics to arts to athletics and service, we're removing barriers. We're removing barriers so that every student has the chance to belong and grow as students, leaders, and members of our community. So in a conversation with Dr. Wool not long ago, we discussed what makes Harrison different and what it means when educators ask what is best for students. So we also explored whether the answers of those educators truly reflect what's in the student's best interest. And we had a conversation of some of my previous experiences, and I was thinking, well, what is best for students? And how do educators actually know that what they're doing is best for the kids and not just what seems like it would work in the moment? And here at Harrison, I can say that we do what's best for students. And it's not just for today's students. It's for the students of the future who are going to move to or come to this district. So thanks to the Board of Ed's continued support, our coaches and advisors have the tools they need to engage students deeply. And we're seeing that work reflected in the way students are learning, leading, and contributing. So knowing this, we want to continue to have our students participate and welcome those in who might struggle to get to the door. So we're reinventing what our clubs look like, feel like, and sound like. And club members are not passive participants. They're the facilitators and the idea makers. We've created opportunities for students to invite and welcome new members. Specifically, last year, we had a club fair during our eighth-grade visit where we provided our incoming ninth graders with opportunities to interact with the current club members that were the leaders of the club and kids that just couldn't wait to talk to other kids about their experiences because they knew what it felt like to be new and they knew what it felt like to almost feel like they just may not join because of a fear of not belonging. So we actually met with the students who were going to participate in that club fair, who were the current students in the high school. And Kelly Malcheski and I had asked them a number of questions of, what do you like about your current club? What brought you in the door? And what may have prevented you from joining? And a lot of it was just, I didn't know how to walk in. And not until I had an advisor or another teammate or another classmate say, hey, I'll go with you, or you should come here, I think you would enjoy this, did they feel comfortable enough to make that step? And that's when they realized they wanted to continue this work for the other kids. So I can continue, but I won't. But I can continue to discuss the outcomes of the systems and structures that are in place to foster student agency and leadership as well as promote the sense of belonging and purpose. But I think it's best if we hear it from the advisors who did participate in the course that Leah had mentioned, and they reimagined the structure of their clubs. So these are the people who are doing the work, and they are being the agents of change. So at this time, I would love to welcome Liz Hill, who is the Friends of Rachel advisor. And I think this group has done a tremendous job in demonstrating what authentic student agency looks like in our school community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for that very powerful excerpt from your dissertation. Bravo.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Liz Hill.
Hi. This is really special to be up here talking to you about what, here comes the fun stuff, I think, because now we're going to really share what we do. And girls, thanks again for staying so late. This is so great that you guys are here, and I'm just so proud of you. So yes, I am the advisor to Friends of Rachel. And I was fortunate enough to be a part of the study group that Leah and Lindsay were running. And I was also fortunate enough to be in the summer program the first time around, the second time around. I even tried to sneak into the third summer course, but I got the boot, understandably so. So that just shows I was super motivated and excited to be a part of this work. So you know, my story here is to kind of share with you what the club looked like prior to taking this course. And if you can see here, it was very advisor-driven, right? So I was setting the agenda. I was in charge of Google Classroom. I was in charge of sending out notifications. And after this course, it allowed me to reflect upon, well, you know, in my own classroom, I'm using inquiry. In my own classroom, I am using agency. And why is that transfer not happening when I'm in front of the room with my club members? And, you know, were the community-building events that took place meaningful? Of course they were. Did our students feel good about themselves after completing some of these activities? Yes. But did they just sit along the surface? Was there depth to what they really wanted to accomplish and what our mission was? And if you see, our mission here is to foster a more positive and compassionate school culture by performing acts of kindness and promoting acceptance. And when the shift happened for me and taking a step back and realizing that I can cultivate these skills in these club members and these leaders and give them that space to take on that leadership role, the change happened, and it was beautiful. The cabinet members began to brainstorm with other members weekly. My place in the room changed. I was sitting in the back of the room instead of the front of the room. I remember one time someone said, is Ms. Hill even here? And I was like, I'm here, in the back. Here I am. I have to be here. So but again, right, how authentic and how natural that was for them to just start the meeting. The cabinet members began to manage Google Classroom. And what we began to see is that through these, you know, authentic conversations about what they really want to do and the differences that they really want to make, the shift happened from, you know, spreading awareness about breast cancer and wearing pink and giving ribbons, which is beautiful, to saying, hey, why don't we go to the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk at Manhattanville College? To, you know, promoting kindness with notes on our lockers to saying, hey, let's spend a whole week performing and advocating for random acts of kindness and working with our FACE program. And then the biggest piece we saw was towards the end of the year, they wanted to collaborate with other groups. What are they doing? And how can we be a part of what they are doing? So we really began to see that deeper engagement, right, in what they wanted and what I needed to do in order to allow that to happen. So it really was and is something that is evolving right before our eyes. And I'm really proud of the work that the girls are doing in our club. And I'm really fortunate enough to have taken these classes and to have been inspired to reflect on my own practice and then see a shift and then see the success that's coming out of it. And there's more than just one success that's happening in our clubs. And our good friend here, Debbie D. Fiore and Anna Abilian, they're able now to present to us what they're doing for YVH. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. So much of what I have to say.
So much of what I have to say, Liz has eloquently already said, Leah has shared, and sitting here listening to them, it really just dawned on me, it dawned on me about how, how I was feeling as an advisor before this year was the same as so many other advisors were feeling. But Leah's study group really now gave us the opportunity to come together and share our experiences. So for me, I've been the advisor of YVH for about 10 years. And I took on YVH because I wanted to instill this passion of service in students. But it soon became that, as you see, that advisor-centered club, just as Liz had shared. It seemed like I was doing all the work. I was running the meetings, putting together the agenda, managing the Google Classroom, taking attendance. And similar to what Liz felt also with Friends of Rachel, I just felt that the kids were just passive participants, not real active members. And I wasn't happy with that. And I wasn't happy with myself in that I felt like I wasn't providing the students with the opportunities that they truly deserved. So along came Leah Moore last year, and along came Anna. And it was reinvigorating. It inspired me to think about what my goals were for not only being advisor, but what my goals were for Youth Volunteers of Harrison. I didn't want it to be that I-centered model. I wanted to put the leadership responsibilities on the students because service is rooted in leadership. Leadership is action, is service, and that's what we wanted, that's what I always wanted, and that's what Anna and I really wanted students to embrace. We do it in our classrooms, just as Liz shared, we foster collaboration, we foster leadership. So naturally, we just wanted to transfer those values into our clubs. So we began to restructure and reimagine YVH to turn it from this advisor-centered to this more student-centered service club. I will turn it over to Anna.
Good evening, everybody. Earlier, Dr. Pace asked you to think back to your experience in a high school club. So I want you to take a minute to think back to that experience. But this time, I want you to think about whether every student was given an opportunity to contribute in a meaningful way. Was every student's voice truly heard or did we sometimes tend to hear the loudest voices? So what Debbie and I did was we restructured YVH to ensure that every single student's voice would be heard. Our goal with YVH is to make sure that students feel empowered and that they have real and authentic opportunities to lead. So what we did was we created subcommittees, and you can see our current subcommittees are fundraising, service, graphic design, and team building. And our intention behind these committees is to provide every single student with chances to develop leadership skills, to take ownership, and to contribute in ways that represent their individual strengths. We have found that through this system, we've provided our members with real ways to lead and that our students, every single student in our club, now can make a real impact on their peers, on their school community, and on the volunteer opportunities that they engage in. So what I'd like to do now is I'd like to invite two of our students, Kayla Endy and Gabriella Collins, and they can share a little bit about their experience in YVH.
It's a credit to this presentation, they're still wide awake.
Hi, my name's Kayla Endy. I'm a junior. And I joined the YVH Service Committee because I think we can all say that we can all be grateful for everything that we have. And it's really important for us to give back to our community. So you might be thinking for being grateful, the things that you can buy with money, but I think more of our ability to create and our ability to learn. So in the YVH Service Committee, what it used to look like is we would walk in and it would be like Ms. DeFiore and Ms. A would like tell us what to do. Last year, I remember we made these rugs and these carpets and we would donate them to those in need. And I never saw anything wrong with that because that's what all club structures were like. The advisor would be there, they would tell you what to do, and then you would do it. But this year, we decided that we would plan it ourselves. So in the last meeting, we were all sitting in a circle in the Service Committee, and we were planning volunteer opportunities within the school and things we could do with, like outside of the school. So one thing we decided that we're going to do for winter within the school is we're going to do a clothing drive for winter clothes. And this involves the people within the club, but also the people outside of the club because they're able to donate and they're able to make an impact within the school. And in the club, just kind of to also like paint the picture, is basically, we sat in a circle and it wasn't just like upperclassmen talking, it was freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors. And we all sat in the circle and we talked and we shared ideas and everyone listened. We bounced ideas off each other and it was a different experience than I've had in any other club because usually you sit there, you listen to the president or the vice president talk. And this time, anyone of any age has the, like, the opportunity to share their voice and become a leader and to speak in a way that they may not have been heard before. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Gabriella Collins. I am a junior at the high school and I've been a member of Youth Volunteers of Harrison since my freshman year. When Ms. A and Ms. DeFiore presented the idea of having different committees, I quickly joined the fundraising committee. I decided to join the fundraising committee because not only is it a great opportunity to share my fundraising experiences, I am a part of my church fundraising committee as well, so I knew that I could bring that experience into the YVH committee as well. I also think that fundraising is really important for any club, not just to be about bake sales and raising money, but fundraising allows with purpose, it just allows us to spread awareness for a specific cause, to involve more people within our community, and hopefully encourage other students to join YVH. Being a part of a community has given me leadership opportunities that I didn't have before in my previous years of YVH. Not only do I have this new opportunity to share my ideas and my own experiences, but it has also allowed me to become more confident and motivated to seek out other leadership opportunities in ways I haven't seen before.
Thank you. So Kayla and Gabby just shared out their experiences with the two committees that they chose, the fundraising and service committee. The other two committees that we thought would, that we would develop that would allow students to showcase their own personal talents was the graphic design committee, which we have so many artistic students in the club. But again, under the old model, they didn't really have that opportunity to take leadership or ownership or to showcase that talent. And the other one was the team building committee. And this really came out of my work with Leah in the study group and how do we bring, how do the students bring other students into the club? And like Kayla had mentioned, under the old model, in our YVH meetings, we would have little pockets of students, like sitting in different parts of the room. And one of our goals that Anna and I really decided on was that we wanted YVH to be a coherent group. And so the team building committee takes charge of that. They, they designed, they implement different team building activities. So one meeting a month is dedicated just to team building for older members, to mentor younger members, and to just encourage students to come back to the next meeting. It's not that checkmark, that, like Liz said, compliance, to just draw them into wanting to come back meeting after meeting, making them feel like they belong. So thank you, Leah, for inspiring us to that.
Thank you very much.
And turn it back to Liz.
All right. I think I know who's coming in.
So I think our members of Friends of Rachel would like to say a few words about their experience with the focus on the shift, the focus on the change. And we've invited three students to show, from different grade levels, to show how the changes have happened and what that looks like for them. So we have Ava, Ava Popescu, and we have Jamie Reyes, and we have our girl, Maddie Reynolds. Okay?
Um, good evening. My name is Eva Popescu and I'm currently a senior at the high school. As a member of Friends of Rachel for three years, I've seen firsthand the changes that have occurred within the club. So during my first year, it seemed as if the club moderator provided us with expectations and responsibilities for each month regarding the activities that we should do. But now I've noticed that it is on us to create these agendas. In addition, my peers and I have been given more opportunities to advocate for our needs and wants. Just two weeks ago, a student actually came up with the idea of our club joining the Breast Cancer Awareness Walk on Sunday morning, which was a huge success. And another example that deeply resonates with me is that my peers and I noticed that within the club, we lacked a social media presence. And as a result, many students in the high school did not know much about Friends of Rachel, what we stood for, and what we hope to do for our school and the greater community. And in order to create this position, I advocated to become the social media manager with the help of Ms. Hill and wrote to Dr. Pace explaining why this role could help our program and educate my peers about Friends of Rachel's role throughout the school. Having an Instagram account has contributed to the development of the club as well as active participation in our school-wide programs. And for me, being able to communicate often with Dr. Pace has given me the opportunities to learn how to advocate for the club and for what is best for the school. And I also really want to thank Ms. Hill for trusting us and making us more independent people overall and allowing us to communicate our ideas with each other in the club. And I definitely think it has strengthened everyone's bonds within the club. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ava.
Hello and good evening. My name is Jamie Reyes and I'm a junior here at Harrison High School. As an upperclassman, I've seen the role of our cabinet members shift. Our leaders run, run the meetings, not Mrs. Hill. We are invited to brainstorm new ideas that create meaningful ways to promote kindness and foster awareness. The cabinet members provide more opportunities to build relationships within members of the club. I've noticed that the cabinet members have autonomy over the agendas and activities within our meeting. With this change in leadership, over the past two years, everyone seems to be more engaged. We are often asked to offer up our ideas and our opinions during meetings. This creates a comfortable environment and welcoming community that influences students to want to join our club. This year, our enrollment is much larger than last year. I'm excited to take on more leadership opportunities as the year progresses and lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maddie Reynolds and I'm a sophomore at Harrison High School. During the first few weeks of my freshman year, Ms. Hill thought it would be a great opportunity for me to meet new students and learn about ways to support my school community. The club members were very welcoming and very involved. What I mean by this is that I noticed they all worked together, brainstormed ideas, and communicated equally and respectfully despite being in different grade levels. From the beginning, my voice has always been heard and respected. As a result, I was able to take on a major role in launching a new community event called Random Acts of Kindness Week last year. I'm looking forward to being a part of Friends of Rachel and learning what it means to lead and give new members a voice. My hope is for other new individuals to feel the way I felt when I walked into the club for the first time. Also, to Ms. Moore's point of places to build leadership and a safe space for students to attend, Friends of Rachel is the perfect club for students to find that. Thank you.
I think we were supposed to have that lovely picture up of our two clubs while our students were speaking. But at this time, Mrs. Moore and I would just invite anybody for any questions to any of the members who presented.
I have a question. You were talking about a certain, I think you said like 50% of advisors have, do you get the feeling that even the ones who haven't participated are sensing the change or taking their clubs in the same direction? How do you see that sort of working its way through all of the 90 clubs and activities you mentioned?
Yeah, I think the person who like is at the front line of clubs, of course, is Mrs. Pace, where students always come with their ideas, whether it's for an existing club, a student group, or something that they want to propose. And she's the one who's always sharing with me collaborative efforts. So I don't know if you want to add to what you are seeing holistically.
I think the question is though, 50% of the advisors have participated.
Correct.
Do you expect more advisors to participate?
And are they the ones who weren't participating? Are they stealing or learning from what has, is happening from the others?
So my answer is yes. And I know Mrs. Pace could like give a direct example of where a non-participant has like seen the modeling and also even students who are members of multiple clubs and they see what it looks like in one place and they push back onto a club where that's not existing.
Got it.
I think you summed it up. Uh, yeah, so I can see the, the difference in the communication that I'm receiving from students and from the advisors has shifted, even for the advisors who have not yet attended the coursework or even the study group. So the, the type of communication is different. Typically, it would be from the advisor, now it's from students and they're learning, either even learning how to construct an email and include their advisors and then copy them on them. And then the way that they ask questions is even different. And to what Ms. Bukama is saying too, of students overlap clubs. And part of the 90 extracurriculars we offer does include athletics. So there is a component there from kids having a lot, a range of experiences and they're bringing it with them. And I have talked to a few advisors who have not yet taken the course and they can see a difference and they talk to other advisors. So it is, they're, they are turnkeying it and I think they would benefit from, from taking it. But they are, we are seeing those shifts, even little by little.
I'd also answer it this way, it is the Field of Dreams model. It would be easy to mandate it as a precondition, but a teacher's approach to something mandated is very different to saying, this is the value, come on in and participate. And I think when you see veteran expert teachers standing up here and saying, I'm doing these kinds of inquiry-based, student-led activities in my classroom, how do I transfer them? They're the commercial. I would much rather, over the next two years, just to continue to offer the course and its value is evident already in kids and in the advisors who want to do good work, 90 clubs and we're also talking about many coaches have also participated. So this is a far-reaching initiative that frankly, in its second year, 50% is nothing short of extraordinary participation. And of course, we have to keep Liz out because she just keeps coming back.
Number one participator, yeah.
Other questions from the board? No?
That was great.
All right, don't move because I have a couple of questions slash observations. So you mentioned distributive leadership deliberately and you told me you were going to. And I think what we see, and I want to point this out to the community because this looks like something different. And it's actually not different at all. It's what we do in all aspects of the organization. So Ms. Bukama and I were having a really powerful conversation about how to make something better. Leah and Lindsay happened to be meeting with me, we talked about it. They activated it, they put it in place, but always around, how do we get kids more opportunity to be the best versions of themselves? That is no different. And you know, I wrote this down, Kayla, because you said something that I think is at the heart of the issue. And that is, we trusted Ms. Hill and we did what she said. In most school districts, people always do what's always been done. What I want you to realize about this program is it's actually an example of who Harrison High School, but Harrison's district is. We never do what other people do. We do, somebody said it out loud, what is in the best interest of kids. And it was almost an epiphany when we were thinking, look at all these brilliant teachers leading these clubs, how come we haven't asked them to unify their approach? It was right there. But it wasn't my idea or your, it was the collective capacity of the organization to come back to the basic question. Is Kayla more effective when she's being Kayla or when she's being told, do what we did last year? The answer is profound. And the ability for each one of our students to affect and invite other kids And the ability for each one of our students to affect and invite other kids to participate in the culture as fully recognized human beings is the power of this. This has nothing to do with clubs, it has to do with how we see one another. And what you've done is you've given it wings by systems and structures and a unified approach. And the thing that I want you to keep focusing on is, this is who we are. We approach our work, everybody in this room, every human being in this room has inherent worth. And what we're doing is we're saying, "And here's another way for you to show that." So to me, I don't know if you realize how important this initiative is. I've said this to you privately, this is incredibly important. Because you know what it does? It actualizes all the capacity that lives in the high school students in that school to make it a better place. And this high school and all that it does will not go forward unless you believe in it. So I can't thank you all enough. Ms. Bukama, you should sleep really well tonight and be extremely proud. Thanks to everybody that participated, bravo.
And we're going to take a brief five-minute break so we can just say hello and goodnight and thank you for the wonderful presentation before we carry on with our business that none of you need to listen to. We'll be back. Okay, yeah, moving on to the personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, certificated personnel, one regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance submitted. Four, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Five, change of status. Six, leave of absence without pay. B, non-certificated personnel, one resignation, two, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Three, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. Four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. C, other. One, student-teacher observer, SED clearance received. Two, contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, approval of Harrison High School debate team field trip to Newark, New Jersey for a debate tournament. B, approval of Harrison High School debate team field trip to Newark, New Jersey for a debate tournament. C, approval of Harrison High School debate team field trip to Newark, New Jersey for a debate team tournament. D, approval of Harrison High School debate team field trip to Lexington, Massachusetts for a debate tournament. E, approval of Harrison High School 10th through 12th grader theater student field trip to Calicoon, New York for the NYSTEA Theater Conference. F, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Council of PTAs. G, Committee on Special Education. H, Subcommittee on Special Education. I, approval of CPSC/CSE minutes. J, approval of CPSC/CSE recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
It's more like an itinerary of travel for the debate team.
Seriously. Yes, I would just like to thank the generous donation from the Harrison Council of PTAs. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects, seeing none. A, approval of 2026-27 budget calendar. B, authorization to increase 2025-26 budget appropriations. C, approval of telecommunications agreement with new era technology for hosted VoIP cloud solution. D, resolution to appoint volunteer drivers. E, approval of engineering services for district-wide BMS upgrade. F, 2025-26 appropriation transfers. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on Tuesday, Tuesday, November 18, 2025, 7:00 p.m. here at Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to include, to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful night.